Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting for Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If everybody please stand for the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, for just as far as one nation under God, in its salt, where it's the great state and justice.
All call please.
Mr. Grigsby here.
Mr. Haynes here.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Here.
Mrs. Saxon.
Here.
Mr. Vaca.
Here.
Finalization of the agendas, anything to add or remove?
The agenda is final, it's presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Saxon, second by Mr. Grigsby, is there any discussion? All call please.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
We're ready to the superintendent's charter report.
Well, thank you, President Vaca. Uh, this evening, um, honored to introduce two distinguished guests. Uh, Michelle Vilstrum, uh, Managing Director of Stiefel Nicholas and Michael Purcella, Managing Director of Sincena and Associates. Uh, both Michelle and Michael, uh, have played a pivotal role, uh, in the district's finance team, contributing their expertise in underwriting, uh, and municipal advisory services. Uh, their efforts were instrumental in, uh, pricing and bringing the district's bonds to market. Uh, they're here today to share insights and discuss details about the significant transaction for the district.
Shall we move up to the podium, sure.
Good evening, we really appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, we won't labor the point to keep you here too long. Uh, we did provide some information on the, uh, what we call a post-pricing memorandum that was already shared with Michael and Roxanne, uh, after the pricing itself that summarizes some of the information about which both Michelle and I are wanting to talk tonight with you. Uh, just to clarify roles, I'm the municipal advisor with Sincena Associates, so I do not have access to the money like Michelle does, but what we do is work in tandem to put together and structure the bond issue and then Michelle's firm was responsible for going out and accessing the capital markets where they tap into investors and actually generate the proceeds for your, uh, instruction proceeds. Uh, throughout the presentation, we'll hold it long, by the means if you have any questions during it, raise your hand, we'll answer them right away and, uh, you can further respond about anything, uh, about which you ask. Um, as you see right there on the screen itself, the transaction was sized at one hundred twenty-one million, eight hundred forty-five thousand dollars, which was, does not represent the whole amount that was passed on your ballot initiative, the remainder which will be issued next year, uh, probably around February. For compliance reasons, to make certain we're within a particular window for spending down those proceeds, we had to delay the issuance of a portion of the transaction. Uh, we won't get into the weeds on that, uh, but, uh, in order to make certain that we are in compliance with those, uh, legal initiatives, Mike Scharr, Bond Counsel for Squire Patton Boggs, worked with Michelle and me to put together a, a financing timeframe that met those parameters. So the first foray into the transaction was what you see there, uh, just under one hundred and twenty-two million dollars. The transaction itself has a variety of, uh, partners involved with it, the most important, I will say certainly, uh, Michelle and I, so. Obviously, the district has a, a large part to do with it and the tax payers, but there are the registrars that will keep track of who owns the bonds, Bond Counsel who will make certain that the bonds are compliant from the legal perspective, remain tax exempt, as well as, uh, compliance with the IRS. What I'd like to talk to you a little bit about is the process leading up to the actual pricing and that's where Michelle will talk a lot more, because that's where her firm, in my opinion, did just a phenomenal job for the taxpayers. Uh, we really hit it out of the park. Uh, she can talk more about Stiefel Nicholas, but from the advisory side of the aisle, we work with multiple firms and it's always nice to be paired up with one with a strong presence like Stiefel Nicholas and one with experience like Michelle has within the industry. Many, many years ago, we were competitors for a long time and now, uh, Providence has brought us working together and this one, it really came through. If you could advance the, the slide. And what we'll do is just touch upon, you can just go to the next, uh, page, please. Right here, what we're gonna go through is a snapshot a little bit and Michelle, maybe you'd like to talk a little bit more about this as this relates to the pricing.
I can, I can, I can barely see it.
Okay.
All right, wait. Oh, okay, so this is, oh, this is where we opened up, so, uh, the pricing day, are you sure?
Maybe, yeah, maybe we'll talk a little bit about leading up to that first, uh, and then we'll get into that.
Yeah.
I probably didn't order the slides properly. The most important component prior to getting to that slide there where we're actually outside accessing investors and setting your interest rates was establishing the credit rating for the district. We had worked with the district before, both Michelle and me, on previous refinancings. Now, this one was must, uh, as large as the transaction was, we had to make certain that we put everything together after we put together the disclosure statement which came from Bond Counsel. When we say disclosure statements, prospectus is what the investors read in order to gain interest and give their orders on pricing day for the bonds. We went to Chicago with Michael and with Roxanne. We had worked diligently in putting together a very large presentation, much of which was based upon stuff that had already been put together through the city and the school district. Uh, Michelle was able to beautifully format that nicely together and we were, uh, able to put the information we needed into it. One of our larger concerns with the credit rating, which is a double A two through Moody's Investor Services, was that the size of the issue and one of their analytical matrices is a debt per capita analysis. We were a little concerned that maybe that was gonna bring down the credit rating. But Michael and Roxanne stole the show, had the presentation, showed every ounce of good that is going on in this district, specifically the community involvement, the interaction with the city, with the students, with the taxpayers, and then that led naturally into the finances, which themselves were really the star of the show. Uh, it was a unique situation where we were able to show Moody's on a five-year forecast going forward, no deficit spending. Now, certainly you've heard Michael present over months and months of the five-year forecast, it's an instrumental document in our world, especially on the credit side, specifically for his world, and that, I believe, was the stronghold for Moody's to really say, we're gonna maintain the double A two, which is what we did, which saved, I mean, effectively, probably millions when you talk about a transaction this size between interest rate differences, and Michelle can comment on that when we get to the, the pricing, and we were able to sustain that double A two. And frankly, the report in itself, which is included in this presentation, read very positively, very strongly. Uh, it was that very, uh, strength of the community as well as the upcoming revaluation of property that really maintained that double A two, so that that was very instrumental in the pricing process. So when we finally found out we were gonna maintain our double A two, we put that into the prospectus that was mailed up to investors and then we traveled to St. Louis with Michael to do the actual pricing and that's where I'll hand things over to Michelle and she can talk a little bit about that process.
I need notes, a little bit. So, so Ju-, uh, Tuesday, June fourth is when we actually priced the bonds. Um, that week, the week going into that, uh, was the highest amount of municipal bonds being sold in the market since two thousand and seventeen. So it's like fifteen billion in municipal bonds throughout the whole country, which really kind of blows my mind, but the average is six billion a year, or, um, a week, which is, you know. So we were a little concerned that we were gonna get kind of lost in the crowd, but, uh, what was going hand in hand with that is very little Ohio bonds for being sold, so that, we really lucked out there. Um, so it's kind of interesting, so that's nine thirty-two. So we start the order period on one day, it starts at nine thirty. Uh, we, uh, we, the day before, we talked to my municipal bond trader and he gives us, it's more of an art than it is a science, he tells us what he thinks the interest rates are gonna look like and we're in this a lot, Stiefel does a lot of K through twelve throughout the country and in Ohio, so he kind of knows where to start. So what you wanna do is, the more demand we get for those bonds, the more likelihood we're gonna lower the interest rate. If we don't get a lot of demand, then we're gonna have to raise that interest rate. So it's our job to find enough investors so, to create that demand and also structure the bonds so that it creates demand. Um, so we have all kinds of different types of bonds in there, premium bonds, count bonds, and it was like, anything an investor could possibly want, we needed to make it as attractive as possible. Mind you, it was a huge issue, so that made it attractive too. Most, most of our investors were institutional investors, so, um, not your bond and pop. You know, we did get a few of those orders, I can tell you exactly how many, but, so we went on at nine thirty, we opened up with the, the red there, so each one of those columns represents a maturity of your bond. So we, we matured from two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and sixty-one, which, you know, uh, we won't put. Uh, so, uh, each one of those maturities, uh, were presented to investors and it opened up with orders right off the bat at nine thirty-two. So, uh, we, we had a good idea that maybe this was gonna be a good day in the market. We were, it's always a little, I've had bad days in the market, it's just one of those things, so we're really hoping it, it all worked out. I'm glad, I'm glad I'm here talking to you after, but, um, so at ten thirty, which was only in, in the order period only goes from nine thirty to eleven thirty, two hours to sell all the bonds, which I, when I first started this business, it's like, what? You know, it doesn't take all day, no, it takes two hours. So at ten thirty, we had received eight hundred and thirty million dollars worth of orders. We only had a hundred and twenty-one to sell. So, and a lot of people are like, oh, man, we should have put more on the ballot, you know? It doesn't really work that way, but, yeah, so we were, that's, that shows an incredible amount of demand. So we knew that we were gonna be reducing these interest rates in the end. Yeah, okay, so, oh, so this was like, is that, that's ten, oh, there's, there's ten thirty. So you can see each one. Not describing, we're watching, but. Oh. Walking all up, you know, on their videos. Awful. So, so each one of these, so you can see these all got like maybe one, this got one order, which is good. All we need is one order per maturity. So these got four orders, which is good. These ones, we've got ten times the amount of bonds we had in that maturity, which is really good. We were able to reduce the interest rates on here very much. I don't know why, um, so much on the long end, but the short end of the yield curve has been weird lately. You know, when the Federal Reserve's gonna increase or decrease rates, it's the short-term rate that's decreasing and increasing. So I think investors are much more comfortable investing out here. Um, so we got a lot of orders on the long end. Um, just to give you an idea of how, who was buying your bonds, so we had institutional orders from a hundred thousand dollars to institutional orders for eighty-two million dollars. So these, these companies come in and they'll, they want the whole, they, they would take the whole, hit the bootle if they could. Um, so you had investors who, uh, forty, there were seven firms placing orders of forty-five million worth of your bonds, which were Hexagon Asset, Vanguard, Spring Lake, J.P. Morgan, and then we had other participation with Uveen, State Farm, all the heavy hitters and these are, these are people that absolutely would only buy bonds that are of high quality. So double A two, Michael talked about, you know, you will be a double A one at some point, that would be one notch above. This was just a lot of debt to start out with and I think as you, as you pay down this debt in the future, everything is going great in this community and that Moody's could not be, I mean, the, the report was just glowing. But they gotta see how we handle this amount of debt, it makes sense. So, um, we did sell some, uh, to what we call retail investors, about three million to like Monopath. Sort of Monopath, like, they came in at like two hundred and fifty thousand dollar orders. So there's these separate managed accounts, you might have one, your broker is buying bonds and then putting it in separate accounts and they buy a lot of municipal bonds, so they, they contributed too. Um, so I guess, if you wanna know, like, if somebody asks you, what was the interest rate on this bond issue for thirty-seven years? It was four point seventy-eight percent was the, which includes all the cost of issuance in there. You put five percent on the ballot, was the ballot mileage, so we're under the ballot mileage interest rate. I mean, it couldn't have gone, I'm, I'm so happy it couldn't have gone better. Um, so I think that's about it, you're gonna get the money on Tuesday. So we, what we do is we collect, what we sell to these investors, we collect all the money from them and then we send it to you. So that happens on Tuesday.
Couple of things about the structure of the bond issue in itself, as we're about to complete the presentation. Michael had wanted to make certain that, given current interest rate environment, though very aggressive and strong with a four point seven eight, did you say? Four point seven eight percent overall interest rate, and we had seen better rates during the COVID era because of what was going on with the economy, but we also, the way the bonds are structured, there's plenty of room for refinancing opportunity. So Michael was pretty emphatic about retaining as much flexibility within that structure, so we were able to implement through Michael's request and a lot through Stiefel's good marketing capabilities, a five-year prepayment, what we call redemptional, optional redemption provision. It's a prepayment, you get one, you have, you can do it after five years, you can do it before five years if you were to refinance on a taxable basis. We're not gonna get into that complicated, uh, stuff right now. But bottom line is that the normal in the industry is ten years. And you can condense that prepayment window from ten to five as you start approaching that window. The opportunity for that refinancing in advance of that pre, uh, price, a pre, uh, payment date becomes better, the economics work better for you, and then naturally, you arrive at that date, at which point you can refinance a lot sooner and half the time. Now, that structure within itself does have, have its pros and cons to it and we were able to put it together in a method though through Stiefel Nicholas that really mitigated quite a bit of the cons. With smaller regional firms, you are unable to accomplish that. So that was one of the.
I'd like to say the credit, but it really, the market, we, they, we were desperate, the market was desperate for Ohio bonds and so we could put the, we could seek the five-year call in there and it didn't cost you anything. If you put a shorter call like that, it would usually increase your interest rate.
Right.
And in this case, it didn't, so we kind of, it was, I mean, I'd like to take all the credit for that, but, yeah, look, yeah. It's better to be lucky than good, right?
That's, we, we, we had a good amount of luck on our side during the, during the pricing. One of the things here at Sincena Associates we try to promote is that shorter call and one of the partners that has been able to really accommodate that need has been Stiefel Nicholas because of the strength of their underwriting desk. So that was one of the other, uh, structure, structural, uh, uh, pieces of the, the overall issue that we implemented in there. So ultimately, the transaction went very well. We have been working with Michael now to optimize the reinvestment of these proceeds. I don't know if you recall, we issued fifteen million dollars in notes, bond anticipation notes. Now that this bond issue will close next week, the money from those notes and the money from these bonds will overlap for just under ninety days, which is completely compliant and legal and it benefits district with the earnings and does not cost taxpayers an additional amount. We provide that analysis. We don't go ahead and do that if it's gonna cost taxpayers more money to the benefit of something else, that's counterproductive. So, all in all, the transaction came together very well. If I may add, like, working with Michael and Roxanne was a pleasure. A professional duo, you've got an incredible representation of board of the district and of the community and they really came through in Chicago. And it was one of the comments that Moody's had for us both, which we don't normally hear.
That's true.
So, uh, kudos to you both. Uh, we really were diligent in preparing that presentation and going through it there in Chicago diligently, page by page, making certain we hit all the necessary points. So all in all, obviously, we love to come here with good news today, we were able to do so. Sometimes there's peppered bad news within there, things we weren't able to accomplish, but this one came together beautifully. It was truly great teamwork, a really nice dynamic with everybody involved. So would you have to take any questions if there are any?
Really thorough.
Let's thank you.
Go to the bank and ask them to catch the check.
No, no. Yeah, no, it's, uh, the, the whole closing process and the flow of funds is, is quite complicated. It's, uh, obviously all digital, but, uh, Michael's got a good group on the investment advisory side that's gonna earn extra money, we're talking significant monies on the earnings. So one point I wanted to make, the tick on this was four point seven eight percent, that included all the, the cost of issuance, but there is one particular rate that the IRS is, with which is most associated and that's what they're called, your eighty-thirty arbitrage rate or your bond yield. And it's that bond yield that you are not allowed to surpass when investing tax-exempt monies. That bond yield is around four thirty-eight, which is always lower because it doesn't include all the extras incorporated. So that will be the number that we will easily be able to meet in the investments, but right now, which is a rarity in our industry, we must not breach it. Otherwise, IRS will come knocking on your door. So we will keep an eye on that going forward, those money.
Five years.
Yeah, that's right. Those monies will be, uh, utilized in the district's fashion however they wish in terms of, uh, further down the road with another transaction, either that or adding on to the current capital plan, but Michael will be able to, to chart those going forward. We'll keep an eye on, I'll keep more of an eye on that along with his investment advisor. Uh, that's a little bit more in my, in my world. So that's the information we have, a lot of the information is contained in that post-pricing report, the credit report, a couple of headlines from that day in the market, as well as what was pricing in the US market that week because of the, the volume. So, uh, Michael has access to that if anyone wishes to see it, it's a little smaller than we anticipated.
Thank you.
You'll get plenty around ten a.m.
Both of you and your friends for the outstanding work helping to maintain our rating. The two of you, phenomenal job. Uh, but the amount of debt we acquired to maintain that rating is amazing. The fact that we can go back in five years if the timing's right to refinance that, we benefited from this to tune of like nine million plus dollars of this building, so now we have an opportunity with the new build. Goes a long way to show our community and the taxpayers that we're diligent and utilize the resources that they trust us and just hands off, uh, all of you and the hard work that was put into this, couldn't thank you enough. And I was a little excited, I got to sign a loan for a hundred. And you will see me on one day, I'll still be in town.
We appreciate the time here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful evening, you too.
Michael, do you want to add?
I don't know, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Announcements, any announcements this evening? Here's an opportunity for an hearing of the public. If anybody in attendance this evening that would like to address the Board of Education, now's your opportunity. And then we'll move into the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented. Page eleven and twelve. All right, page eleven, uh.
Yes.
And Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? All call please.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Okay, finance report, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, we have a few items to consider this evening for the finance report. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the financial reports from May two thousand and twenty-four, the estimated resources and appropriations amendment for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, and the temporary appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. I move to approve this, this, excuse me, the finance report in one reading.
Second. Move by Ms. McCarthy, second by Mr. Grigsby, is there any discussion? All call please.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Uh, education report, Ms. Saxon.
We have one item under the education report. I recommend that we approve a supervised overnight field trip for North Regional High School girls' basketball players to travel to Findlay University in Findlay, Ohio. This trip is set for June twenty-fourth to June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. I vote to approve the education report in one reading. Second.
Moved by Ms. Saxon, second by Ms. McCarthy, is there any discussion?
All call please.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Okay, we have two items under buildings and operations. The first item is the district's insurance policy through the Ohio School Plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year effective July one twenty-four with Love Insurance. The second item is the district's waste management through the Ohio School Plan effective July one twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-seven with Public Services. I vote to approve these in one reading.
Second.
Moved by myself, second by Ms. McCarthy. Any discussion? All call please.
Mr. Vaca, yes. Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Human Resources Report, Mr. Haynes.
Um, we have several items to consider under the Human Resources Report. Two administrative staff resignations, three certi- certified staff resignations, three support staff resignations, one non-representative support staff resignation, two administrative staff contracts, eight certified staff appointments, one non-representative support staff contract, two support staff appointments, one extended days contract, six N R E A supplemental contracts, five non-N R E A supplemental contracts, two administrative staff contract adjustments, one support staff contract adjustment. I move to approve the Human Resources items in one reading.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Haynes, second by Ms. Saxon, is there any discussion? All call please.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes, if you consider Human Resources Report.
Yes, sir. We have one more item to consider under the Human Resources Report, one non-N R E A supplemental contract. I move to approve this item in one reading.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Haynes, second by Ms. McCarthy. Any discussion? All call please.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mrs. Saxon.
Obscene.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
And here's the exciting part of the meeting. Your explanation.
Second exciting part.
Second exciting part, yes. Equally as exciting.
Mr. Brett will join us to first introduce one of our newest administrators, just a quick.
Hi, thank you.
Well, sort of.
Good to see all of you again, glad we're inside and not outside today, so. We stood here just over a year ago and introduced you to this candidate and what we said at the time was that we felt like we were getting a steal. So our candidate, um, came to us via some teaching time that she had in, uh, both Keystone and Strongfield, where she both came extremely highly rated. And we talked about the fact that, you know, we knew that our candidate had a very bright future. Um, I don't know if any of us saw at the time, but a year later, we're gonna stand here again talking about how excited we are to have this candidate with us. So, uh, our new Liberty Principal, um, Marie Pulio, I think is, um, exactly what we're looking for, you know, in that position. So certainly we were disappointed when Mrs. Appetekne decided that she was going to take great offer. Uh, but I think all of us knew at that point in time that we had the right person on staff to build that role. So, um, she brings a wealth of, of knowledge to the position, um, and is just a great all-around person in her career at Liberty, she's been an impact already and that's ultimately what we're looking for. So, we'd like to congratulate you and welcome you up here if you'd like to share anything.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to say thank you to our board, Roxanne, our Board of Education, um, all of our cabinet members. I'm extremely excited to be back at Liberty, um, in a new capacity. Um, sad that Mrs. Appetekne left us, but we work so closely together, I'm confident I will be able to continue moving us forward. So I'm very excited and just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, now my note card says I'm supposed to turn this over to Mr. Sullivan, who has definitely excited. Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, it is my pleasure to introduce our new five-six interac associate principal, this is Melissa Bensy.
All right.
Um, as we began the process of interviewing for our associate principal position, we cast a pretty wide net. We wanted to try to find the most accomplished candidates that we could for this position. Uh, but after every round of interviews, our conversations just kind of led back to Mrs. Bensy. Um, she brings with her a wealth of experience, uh, to INRAC with a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's degree in moderate to intensive special education. She has worked as a certified behavior therapist, as well as a K-five intervention specialist. Most recently, uh, she has worked as a seventh and eighth grade intervention specialist and administrative intern at Ranger High Technology under Melissa Durkin, where she led PBIS initiatives and led project-based learning and curriculum initiatives at the building level. I'm excited that Mrs. Bensy. I'm excited that Mrs. Benzi will bring these experiences to INRAC to support our students and staff. And I look forward to watching her continue to grow as an educator and school leader. With that said, I introduce you to Mrs. Benzi.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity. I joined North Regional City School last year, and it has been such an amazing opportunity. Everyone has been so welcoming and supportive of my personal and professional growth. And I look forward to continuing to pour into this new role the way I did last year in my prior role. So thank you again. Welcome.
And my note card says I'm going to turn it over to.
Boy, thank you. So I have the pleasure today of just giving you a little bit of information about some of our new teaching candidates. One of them is with us tonight, so I will start with Caitlin Coons. So we are really excited to have Caitlin joining us as a math teacher here at the Academic Center. She was a Midview and Bowling Green grad who spent the last two years at Bedford High School as a math teacher. Her experience with high school-age students will provide great benefit as we prepare our students for the next step in their education. When asked, Caitlin said that one word that describes her is generous. Caitlin, thank you for being. And the rest of the candidates are not here tonight, but I'm just going to read their bios so that you can, when you meet them, put their name to a stage. Daryl Yeko is a North Regional resident who will have the honor and opportunity to be the first PE teacher at Liberty to work in a dedicated gym. He is a graduate of both Cleveland State University as well as Imperial State University, and his teaching experience with both Cleveland Metropolitan School District as well as Lorraine City. He shared that he's always wanted to teach in the city that he lives in to really get involved in the community. Welcome, Daryl, to the Ranger family. Adam Lewis is joining the team as an intervention specialist at the Academic Center. Mr. Lewis is a University of Toledo grad who has teaching experience in both Bowling Green as well as Orchard Middle School in Solent. He shares that his, his most interesting job was working in a preschool setting on a military base in both Barron and Pearl Harbor, among other locations. He is hoping to find a strong West Side district to become a part of, and he is glad that he thought this could be his home. Anthony Brown will be joining us as a math teacher at NRHS and for a year with the Akron Public Schools. He brings a unique perspective to the high school because he was a student in a STEM school himself. And then he later taught in a PBL setting. He is going to be teaching some of our PBL math courses at the high school along with our recently implemented MMR course, which is that Algebra II Equivalency course. Amanda Manchin is returning to the area from Perrysburg, where she has been an intervention specialist in assistance and coach. She will be joining ECLC as an intervention specialist and brings a wealth of information in the realm of student behavior. When asked where she would travel, if she could go anywhere, she said Rome, and she is fascinated by history and culture. Libby White may be a name that you recognize from the past. She's going to be joining us for the second time, this time as a school psychologist. Previously, she spent 14 years as a speech pathologist, and then she just completed her field experience work for her school psychologist license in our district. We look forward to having Libby back with us in this new role and capacity. And then finally, Jennifer Novak is also a name you might recognize. She joined our staff during the 23-24 school year as a Title I lever placement teacher at Liberty, and she started mid-year in January with us. She will be joining the St. Pete's staff as a part-time Title I teacher for next school year. We're excited to have her in this new role to help our students grow with their literacy initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if you want to come up, Caitlin, we have a little something for you. Thank you so much. And just like the village, oh, perfect.
Again, welcome, everybody. All of you that have been with us and sent you to stay with us, forward to what you do. And all the new people coming up board, we're excited to have you join our staff. I think it was when I introduced myself to some of you, we have an amazing staff here in North Regional City Schools, an amazing administrative team. And the kids are second to none. We have some really great kids here in North Regional, so we're very excited to have all of you on your roles and again, welcome. All right, it is recommended the Board of Education adjourn this regular meeting. By Mr. Brigsby, second by Mr. Haynes. Call call please.
Mr. Brigsby. Yes. Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxton.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Want to see everybody again next month, right? You're going to be regulars at our meeting. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Friends, take well.